Ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to Spotswood High School. Tonight, ladies and gentlemen, the Spotswood High School Youth and Government Club welcomes you to the District Three School Board Debate. My name is Emmett Shaheen, I'm the club sponsor, and I will be the moderator for our debate this evening. We would like to thank Principal Strickler, our custodial staff, Mr. Greg Gillette, for making the livestream possible, and to the Rockingham County School Board and the Central Office personnel for extending us the use of the building, and to each of you who gave assistance in making this event happen. I'd like to take a moment to ask members of the audience to please turn off their cellphones and refrain from speaking during the debate. People have traveled from all over the county, and we do not want to detract from one another's purpose for coming, which was to hear from our three candidates tonight. Seated in the three position, Mr. Matthew Cross, and the number two position, Ms. Lauren Mullen, and the number one position, Ms. Hillary Irons. In the interest of time, we respectfully ask members of the audience to hold their applause for the opening and closing remarks only. Please refrain from applauding questions and rebuttal remarks. The four officers of the Spotswood High School Youth and Government Club will be asking all questions of the candidates this evening. No questions will be accepted or taken from the audience. Our club members and officers are, gentlemen, ladies? Co-president Augustina Tobarin-Fonte, co-president Kieran Shaheen, vice president Hannah Liberacci, and our secretary/treasurer Jonathan Eller. The candidate speaking order was selected by lottery earlier this evening. Each candidate will be granted three minutes for opening remarks. After opening remarks, the candidates' questions and response order will rotate, with the first question going to the candidate who spoke second during those opening remarks. Each candidate receiving a question will have three minutes to respond. The opposing candidates will also then have three minutes to respond to the same question. Each candidate will then be granted an additional one minute to rebut or clarify statements made by their opponents on said question in the order to which they were received. Questions will continue to rotate, with each candidate having an equal number of questions directed to them, and then closing remarks will given in the same order as their opening remarks, with each candidate granted three minutes. Before we begin with opening remarks, Kieran Shaheen would like to lead us in unison as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated.
Thank you. Candidate Irons, you drew the number one card. You may begin with your opening remarks.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Shaheen, and thank you to the government students for hosting this event. It's great to be here at Spotswood, especially in this auditorium, where I particularly have so many wonderful memories from my time teaching here. From those of you who don't know, I'm a former choir director here, and I'm a licensed teacher. And I'm really excited about this debate because it's not only run by the students, but it is for the students, and so I'm just gonna be speaking a lot towards you guys tonight. But that matters a lot to me because education is the single greatest tool that you have to open doors to your future. Whether you all choose to enroll in college, or pursue a trade, or enlist in the military, your education is going to shape your opportunities, and it is the responsibility of our school system to prepare you for that. When I think about what has changed since I was teaching here, the biggest shift has been around technology. When I was teaching, smart boards were new, the iPhone was being just invented, and a lot has changed. So, learning now, today, happens a lot online, and while that has expanded our access to information, it's also made it much harder to discern truth. Artificial intelligence is challenging students, teachers, and even school systems in ways we've never seen before. Yours will be the very first generation in human history, required to question literally everything. Everything. From news, to social media posts, to pictures, and more. Everything you consume, you will have to verify, and so you will need the skills to evaluate information by checking sources for credibility, seeking full clips of content instead of consuming only soundbites. Critical thinking is no longer just an academic skill, it's one of survival. That means asking questions like, "Is this true? What does the evidence say? Who benefits if I believe it? What makes the most logical sense?" And your ability to ask questions will enable you to think deeply, instead of reacting quickly, and that is gonna set you apart from your peers. And I will never forget a lesson that I had in college, with my educational professor, offered these powerful questions. He said, "This is the most powerful question a teacher can ask, and it is why. Why does a student suddenly stop turning in homework? Why does another always fall asleep in class? Why does a student never raise her hand even though she knows the answer?" The answers are rarely simple, they're often a reflection of real life. We have families who are stretched thin, we have children carrying adult burdens into school, we have anxiety, hunger, exhaustion, sometimes a lack of anyone believing in a student. But when we take time to ask critical questions, we can see the big picture, and we can find the root of a problem. And that same principle applies to school leadership. If we ask better questions, we can make better decisions for students, teachers, and families. So I hope as you all listen tonight, that you will put these questions to good use, because your future success as students, and us as adults in this new world, will be impacted by our ability to think critically. And I am running for school board to make sure our focus returns to education, so that our students have the skills they need to think critically, to be successful in their future.
Thank you, candidate Irons. Candidate Mullen, you drew the number two card. You may begin your opening remarks.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming, and I echo the same appreciation for the Spotswood High School principal, and for our Youth and Government students who have come here and prepared and worked very hard to put this together for us. So, why am I here? I'm here for two words, and their names are Josephine and Kamina. They are my grandbabies, and I felt a call to serve because I want to have a voice on a school board that will be making decisions for my grandbabies. I also felt the need to utilize my skills as a leader, and shared governance, and an educator for twenty years, to make good decisions for large groups of people who will be affected by those decisions. So I started on this campaign of unity, and the process of unity, in my opinion, starts with finding common ground. So I want to acknowledge my opponents, and tell you an asset about them that I appreciate. For Mrs. Irons, it's your service to the community. It's very important. For Mr. Cross, your commitment to giving your word and keeping your word. And those are really important assets. So I chose those because I see those in myself. And I continued the journey of finding common ground by meeting with school leaders, principals, stakeholders such as the Rockingham County Educational Foundation. We have Ms. Basset here. I've met with the superintendent, I've met with teachers, students, parents. I've just begun those conversations to help find common ground, see what they expect of me, and what they need. And so, as I close this out, I will say that I don't know everything. I have researched, I have read, I've had conversations, I have looked at minutes, I've looked at agendas, I've looked at policies. And so, while I know some things, I don't know everything, and I think that's a good thing, because when you go on a school board, you shouldn't know everything. You need space to learn, and to be able to make decisions after being informed by the information that you receive. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Mullen. Candidate Cross, you drew the number three card. You may begin with your opening remarks.
Thank you, Ms. Mullen, and thank you for those kind remarks. I will also say it's been a blessing to be able to get to know you through this school board race, and to meet you at the county fair and your husband, and also to be able to spend some time on the phone with you, talking with you. It's been a real joy. So, I welcome everyone here tonight. I am Matt Cross, I am the current District Three School Board member representing you here tonight. I also, I wanna say thank you to Emmett Shaheen, who's the moderator for the event tonight, and I also wanna thank the Youth and Government Class, or Club, for putting this on. Can you give, whoever's here tonight that was on the state championship debate team, will you please stand if you're in the audience here tonight? Do you give them a hand? Congratulations, and I thank you for representing Spotswood very well. We did a great job last year in all that we accomplished here at Spotswood High School. I'm here tonight to tell you that we didn't burn the system down like the superintendents and ex-school board members wrote in the DNR about two years ago. When the conservative majority took over the school board, we have done a lot, not only in ending wokeness in RCPS, but also in the deal of education here in Spotswood. So I wanna first start off tonight by listing some of the things in which we have accomplished over the last two years, and I have also accomplished some of these things myself over the past four years, especially when it comes to doubling our school resource officers. For the first time, we hired a school resource officer in twenty-plus years in Rockingham County public schools. And so, we haven't burned the system down. RCPS is safer and more transparent than ever before. We now have a strong starts program at Plains, Cub, and Mountain View Elementary School, and we're getting ready to open a building bridges for K, for three through fifth grade in that school. We opened up four lab schools here in Rockingham County. Every high school now has a lab school here in the county. We adopted a real estate curriculum that when our seniors graduate, they can drive to Richmond, take the test, and have their real estate license. We strengthened our ESL program here in RCPS. We went through a full audit for our special needs department, and led by Chris Bryant. We doubled our SROs, we hired a safety director, we put Narcan in all of our schools, we stopped, we put Stop the Bleak kits in all of our schools, brand-new cameras in all of our schools, we have the keyless entry in all of our schools, we have a bully app now for all of our schools, we have a LifeSpot app for our teachers to be able to contact 911 immediately, we have full-time SROs in our middle schools, which we didn't have before, and we have the best superintendent in the state of Virginia, and I could go on and on. So, thank you for allowing me to speak here tonight.
Thank you, candidate Cross.
Good afternoon, my name is Agostina Tobarin-Fonte, and I am co-president of the Youth and Government Club. Ms. Mullen, I have a curriculum framework question for you. Isaac Washington asks, "Other students, including myself, have found it difficult to increase a grade with the year-long grading system, especially in the last half of the year. Would you ever consider returning back to the quarter system?" You have three minutes.
So, the four-by-four system, is that what you're referring to?
I'm referring to the grading system that we have right now, that is year-long. So, yeah, you got it?
So, the system in place now is, you're talking about the year-long system that's in place now?
The year-long grading system, that we get one grade.
Right, right. So, it's the four-by-four system that you're, I'm assuming you're referring to, is beneficial for kids who perform well in a more compressed timeframe, but it is not good for the arts and the humanities and some of the other things that need to run throughout the year, because kid needs, kids need immersion in those subjects. And so, I would need to consider and look at, what do the outcomes look like? And how would a child be able to perform in a more compressed timeframe versus over the whole year? We know that the arts and the humanities and some of the specials that are offered, like in that format, can help students be exposed to those, that content, and those, such as playing an instrument, or theater, or some of the choral and choir activities that they're engaged in. And so, for a student who is wanting to get their grade up in that, in the sense that it is now, I think that we need to also look at policies that weigh the averages. So, right now, there is no policy that says that the first semester and the second semester are fifty-fifty, and so if we wanted to maintain the current system, we would need to balance that out.
Mr. Cross, same question, you have three minutes. Would you like me to restate it?
No, I heard you. Thank you so much. Thank you for asking that question, and I appreciate you guys bringing this up tonight. If there was anything that I've been leery on and I have not liked, since Dr. Schike has come on, I think that would be the one complaint that I have, is going to the year-long grading scale that we've gone to. It's a couple of reasons why I don't like it. Number one, it's very difficult for students who are playing sports, are trying to get their grades up when they have a below-average grade. So if you get inside playing sports, you're right on the bubble, and you need to get your grades to come up. It takes a very long time to bring that grade up when you're in season and playing a sport. So that's one of the reasons that I saw, even in my own house, my son, sorry, son, you get involved in sermons, and you get involved here in the school, so I apologize. But last year in playing baseball was tough for him. He was struggling in two of his subjects, and he was working his butt off trying to get that grade to come up, but it was very difficult for him to get that up. Thank God we have some good coaches and administrators that saw that he was working hard to try to get that grade up. The second reason why I don't like it is, that a student can do well all year long and know near the end of the school year that I don't really have to put my full effort into this, and I can kind of slack off. And therefore, I would like to go back to the old way in which we were grading beforehand, but I'm being patient, I'm taking time to see how things are working. We have some teachers that really like it, we have some teachers that can't believe we went to it, and I'm kind of sitting back looking at it, and I'm hearing parents as well, of where you're at with it with your children.
Thank you. Ms. Irons, same question, would you like to rehear it?
No, thank God, I understand, thank you. I actually, as a parent, experienced incredible frustration with this policy last year, and I was already in touch with Dr. Schiflett about it, as well as teachers here at Spotswood and administration. The grading policy that we have, so for the people in the audience that maybe do not know, historically, we have four nine-week grading periods. Last year, we went to a grading period that was called snapshots, where we basically get a report every nine weeks, but the grade book is open for the entire year. And Matt did describe accurately what the impact of some of that is, is that it's very hard for the students to move the grades. And so, it basically hamstrung our students. Whether they were strong students, or poor students, or somewhere in the middle, there was a lack of consistency in implementation. Now, the good thing about this policy is that it's based on mastery, which is really important. I, as a teacher, you know, I teach piano on the side as well, or used to, and my students in piano level one could not get to piano level two if they didn't master the material and the skills needed to get there. But that's not happening in our current way of operating. So this idea for mastery is fantastic. It's that we leave the grading book open so that the students come back and say, "Well, I got, you know, SOL 4.1, but I didn't really get 4.2, so I'm gonna be able to go back and work on that and correct it." But unfortunately, there just really wasn't a lot of training, I don't think, for the teachers, and so there was inconsistency, where teachers were still holding deadlines, and that meant the students couldn't go back and correct things as it should have been intended. And again, that affected a lot of children, including my own child, who couldn't start a basketball game because he couldn't pull his grade up. And I will tell you, as a matter of human energy, and resources, and conservation, and protection, even a normal adult would say, "Well, if I have a C and I can't get better than a C, I might as well strive for a C," and as a matter of conservation. So, I like the idea of this policy. I think in order to implement it, we need to make sure that we are training our teachers and making sure everyone understands what the point of the policy is. And also, as, is that, can I, am I done? Okay. And then, as a matter of grading, we need to make sure that we are allowing you all to be competitive appropriately with the kids you're competing to go to college with, because I know when I was teaching here, the grading policy for A was ninety-four to a hundred, where other counties had a hundred, ninety to a hundred instead, and so apples-to-apples wasn't, didn't exist. We need to make sure our grading policy is fair to you all, so that you can remain competitive as you apply. so that you can remain competitive as you apply for your next level of education.
Thank you. Ms. Mullin, you have a, Ms. Mullin, you have a one-minute rebuttal. Would you like to use it?
I agree with what Ms. Irons said as far as bringing up that grading scale to make it match with what they would expect to experience in higher education. I agree with that.
Mr. Cross, you have a one-minute rebuttal. Would you like to use it?
No, I'd just like to say again that it wasn't, that's not a dig on Dr. Shiflett in what I said. I just would like to see how teachers and parents are liking the system that we've gone to and to hear a little bit more about them. We've been doing it now for a little bit over a year. And I've heard some positive and some negative. But I think it's important that we continue to give it a shot and see how things are going, and then reevaluate and see if it's the best thing that we've gone to.
Thank you. Ms. Irons, you have a one-minute rebuttal. Would you like to use it?
I would just like to echo that again. What is the point of a mastery-based grading policy if we don't provide a space for the students to become masters of the material? So, I think that we need to make sure that we include that along with that we have grading inconsistencies. What means an A in one teacher's class is not an A in another teacher's class. If one teacher focuses, you know, 70% on tests and quizzes, another focuses on attendance and classwork and homework, then we've got differences in what that means for the students, even in our one building, and forget across schools. And as a matter of attendance, I think it's really important that the students have leadership that models attendance, and we currently don't have that in our district.
Thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Hannah Liberace. I'm the vice president of Youth and Government here at Spotswood. Mr. Cross, I have a question for you related to school board policy.
Okay.
What are your thoughts on the newly adopted club policy throughout the county? And how does this promote mental health since more than half of the clubs were taken away? You have three minutes.
Thank you for asking a question. Your name again?
Hannah Liberace.
All right, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
I'm, with the, with the club policy, last night, we heard a young man who came and spoke about his club not being considered a club. And I think the biggest reason of what he was facing was he didn't have a teacher to be able to, to be able to hold that club, and to have that club. There are reasons why we do it the way we do with the, with the clubs because we don't just want anything to be entering into your schools. There are a lot of things that are not good that could enter into the schools that are, that do not hold our community's values. And so, we do have policies in place to be able to talk about how you can become a club and how it's important to have a teacher to be able to sponsor that club. And like I said, we don't want just anything coming into the school. For example, there's, there are, well, I'm not going to give the example, but there are things that are not too, that are not good that can come into the school that we don't want inside the school. So, I like our policy that we have.
Ms. Irons, you have three minutes. Would you like me to restate the question?
No, I understand, thank you. This is another area where I, as a parent, experienced a little bit of frustration myself this year because the last few years on club days, I have been frustrated because my son doesn't want to go to a club. And I said, "Start a club," and he was like, "No." And I said, "Join something else, find some friends." "No," he didn't want to do it. And so, club days were a little bit of a waste. And I was always trying to say, "Stay in school and do something else. Do your homework, do this, do that." And that's frustrating. So then, this year, my son was super excited. He has his former basketball coach, who is in the Fellowship of Christian Athletes, and he wanted to start or be part of the FCA here. And my son was finally going to join a club. Come to find out, he couldn't do it, only before or after school. So, the policy that has changed, well, actually, the policy was already existent. It just wasn't being enforced, from what my understanding is from contacting Central Office. And so, the policy is now that students may only have educational clubs during the school day, and anything else has to come before or after school. That is to ensure that, again, the clubs that are being desired are something that everyone desires, from adults down. It's not that we are allowing things that are against our values. Unfortunately, when, you know, you set the precedent for something like FCA, you have to then also allow the flip side of the belief systems. And when we open the door to that, whether we welcome one set of values, we have to welcome all of them because we are a public school system. And so, we need to be careful about what kind of precedents we set. And so, the policy is existent for that. I don't believe it wasn't a school board decision. It was something that the administration decided to enforce as well.
Thank you. Ms. Mullins, you have three minutes to respond. Would you like me to restate the question?
No, thank you, thank you. I think clubs help kids find context and meaning in their lives. Just like extracurriculars, they're very essential to their, you know, forming themselves as adults and humans. And if we start to censure the type of clubs and activities that enter the schools, that is never a good thing. And I agree with Ms. Irons about that. We have to offer both, both values systems, you know, when we're talking about what types of clubs are entering the schools. It's also exclusionary. So, if clubs can only be offered after school or before school, those transportation issues, parents can't always get their kids to school or pick them up later. So, it's in conflict with family processes and family dynamics. So, I would definitely be in support of trying to be a little more inclusive of our club activity in the school environment.
Thank you. Mr. Cross, you have a one-minute rebuttal opportunity. Would you like to rebut?
I would just like to say that, you know, when I was in school, I wasn't a part of any clubs. I played sports, and I was able to take that time to, for study halls and be able to catch up on work. And so, I know that my son as well, he's not involved in a club right now. I think that there's some, very, a lot of interest in putting TPUSA with Charlie Kirk Clubs all around our high schools. And I hope that we see that here at Spotswood as well. And hopefully, he'll be one of the ones that maybe will put that club in place here at Spotswood. But right now, he uses that time to be able to, to catch up on his work. And that's a good opportunity for kids who are not part of a club that they can do as well, so.
Ms. Irons, you have a one-minute rebuttal opportunity. Would you like to rebut?
I would just add on to my original statement that I think that we could be more effective with the club days, especially for the students that aren't involved in a club or choosing to be in. We could offer, I think, more tutoring, or even peer engagement, or ways that we could foster relationships within the schools because that can strengthen our community. And that enhances safety in the schools as well. When people feel connected and cared for and supported, they achieve more.
Ms. Mullins, you have a one-minute rebuttal opportunity. Would you like to rebut?
Yes. Did you say Turning Point Club in, within the school?
Yeah, there's a TPUSA they can have within the school.
Inside schools, during school.
Clubs.
Okay, thank you. I don't have anything to say about that.
Oh, would you like to discuss it? Because I'd like to discuss it if you do. Okay.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Jonathan Eller, and I'm the secretary for the Youth and Government Club. I have a question for you related to districting. Ms. Irons, how can the school board plan for expected growth in Rockingham County to avoid for repeat cycles of redistricting?
Yes, well, the school board should have been planning for that. And we needed a school a while ago. And I think it's a mistake that we have not already had one in place. When a school division is growing like ours is, more families, more housing, more students, we overcrowding renders two options. Basically, redistricting, which is sending kids into different schools potentially, or building a new school. And both options have trade-offs, cost, timing, community impact. So first, being fiscally responsible, as I am as a conservative, isn't never spending money, it's spending money wisely. And no, our new elementary school is not going to cost $150 million, as Mr. Cross stated, online and in person. It's, and the CIP plan is $40 million. The Board of Supervisors already has money set aside for that. And also, redistricting, I'm not a fan of. We did it just a few years ago, and there are still people in our community who are very upset about that. When people pick where their homes are, they pick it for a reason, often because of the schools. It disrupts families and communities to be redistricting regularly. There's public backlash because, again, parents pick their homes purposefully. It constrain transportation and staffing. We already don't have enough buses and enough bus drivers. And so, sending kids further down the road, more kids on the buses, is not an ideal situation. For example, we live nine minutes away from Monta Video Middle School, but my daughter would get on the bus an hour before school to get there on time. That's silly. It's a temporary fix, redistricting is. Our county is growing. And if new housing keeps coming as it is, we definitely can see that there's new housing projects approved, thousands of homes in the pipeline. By the time it's all built, we're going to need more schools. And so, it's time to just build one. This is also exactly why it's very important to have people on a school board who have long-term planning skills and can see the big picture because we are dealing with this issue simply because we have a high school at the edge of a county. And I was teaching here at Spotswood when they were building East Rock or considering it. And I remember being at a faculty meeting when we were deciding who was going to go where. And I raised my hand, I was just 24-years-old, and I said, "Why are we building a county all the way at the edge of the county line? Or building a school out the edge of the county line? You build where the growth is, and that's the inward-out. And if we had built that school in the middle of the county and not at the edge, we wouldn't be dealing with this problem at all." So, we need to make sure that people on our school board are fit to make decisions like that because we're still dealing with the consequences of it.
Ms. Mullin, same question. Would you like me to repeat it?
Oh, I'm good, thank you. So, redistricting is a very sensitive and polarizing topic that I think we can all agree that the impacts to families are consequential. It tears communities apart, literally. It affects how parent, people parent their children if the adulterer, children are being, are in a different school district than the younger children. Or they're redistricted far away. It creates logistical issues with getting your kids to and from school. But in that context, you know, I met with principals on my journey of learning. And while many of them expressed a lot of fear about redistricting, they recognize realistically that their schools don't have any space. You can look at this paper, and you can say, "Oh, there's capacity." But there really isn't capacity, not based on what I heard from principals and administrators. And so, I think this paints a false picture of capacity that isn't there. So, actually, what I would be in favor of is a, is a potential solution that could be short-term or maybe long-term, where we would move 7th or 8th grade in Elkton over to East Rock to sort of solve that issue of the extreme capacity that they have. And then, for our district, we expedite the build of a new school. And in the meantime, we actually start the renovations that needed to happen at Monta Video and Spotswood that got pushed off and continue to be pushed off. Those were pushed off year over year, and they continue to not be on the forefront of the comprehensive plan. And so, people are very passionate about this subject. And I'll tell you, I will not vote for redistricting, not on my watch.
Mr. Cross, same question. Would you like me to repeat that?
I, no, sir, thank you so much for, for the question. First of all, when you sit in this seat, you have to make hard decisions. You have to, and you have to have a backbone. And I've proven that over the past four years, that I'm willing to make the hard decisions and have a backbone when it comes to hard things within our community. I don't know how you can sit here and say that you're fiscally responsible, but you're okay in opening up a, a new elementary school when we have room, if we redistrict, to go east. Because 50% of the people that live in Rockingham County do not have children in schools. And so, the parents, I know it's a tough thing for us to realize that we would have to redistrict our children, but we're asking 50% of the people who live in our community to, to spend that taxpayer-dollar money and to put a new elementary school when we do not need one at this time. I'm all about putting a new elementary school in when we need that elementary school. But at the moment, we do not need that elementary school. I know that there are Board of Supervisor members and school board members that are hot and heavy and wanting to put a new elementary school in. And they ran their campaigns on no new building within our county. And then, what they do, the first thing they went into, into, as they were elected, they partnered with national builders to build over 250 units where the new one's going to, supposedly where the new elementary school will go, which won't have enough room for a track on there that we have at other elementary schools. We build elementary schools on 20-plus acres. They wanted to give us 10 acres to put this elementary school on. They want to put the elementary school in the middle of a 250-unit. How's that going to age over 20 and 30 years? You want to talk about the mistake that the school board made down in the East Rock? What kind of mistake are we making when we're putting an elementary school in the midst of a 250-unit complex with duplexes and townhomes? How's that going to age in 20 or 30 years when it becomes low-income housing and you have an elementary school? How's the safety of those kids going to be sitting in the midst of a subdivision, such like that? So, yeah, I'm not for putting an elementary school there. Talk about making good decisions on being on the school board. It was me, your representative, that, that looked into and asked Dr. Shiflett, "Do we have enough room at Plain, at Pleasant Valley, not Plains, but Pleasant Valley Elementary School to add on to that to help with the new growth that's helping on the south end of town?" He looked into it, and he said, "Matt, that is a great idea." I said, "Don't tell the rest of the board that came from me." And so, we looked into it, we agreed with it on the board, and we are, we are making the necessary means to hold off. And I think that we can hold off, and this has become a political issue since this campaign. But I don't think we're going to need to redistrict for another five to eight years here in Rockingham County. But if we did redistrict, the only thing that District III parents are going to have to deal with is you're going to have to go to a different elementary school. You're going to come back to your middle school at Monta Video, and your kid's going to graduate from Spotswood High School. So, we're not going to ship you down to Elkton Middle School and East Rockingham High School. You're still going to graduate here at Spotswood High School. So, that's, that's my answer to that.
Ms. Irons, this is your one-minute opportunity for rebuttal.
What struck me in Matt's response is that he said, "Don't tell the rest of the board the answer came from me." What kind of relationships do you have with the board of, that you work with if you can't be honest with them, and an idea can't come from you and be accepted? And I think that we all know what kind of relationship Matt has with our current board. It's not a good one. And it's not, he just threw our board, you may, you may not interrupt because the rules are such that I am speaking. The Board of Supervisors was just thrown under the bus. And you cannot operate in a county like that. We are all tired of it. We are tired of drama and division. The evidence of your relationship speaks for itself, and everyone's ready for someone else to be in this seat.
Can I, can I speak now, or is it Ms. Mullin?
Ms. Mullin, this is your one-minute opportunity for rebuttal.
So, you just said you had this conversation. Was that in a closed session or an open session? Because the redistricting conversation
It was an open session.
Just came up, and all of a sudden, people are shocked by some of, some of the, the way that that has gone down. But what I want to know is, when did, when did taxpayers get asked what they thought about that? Pushing these things off, earmarking a new MTC, earmarking all these other projects and pushing off the renovations for much-needed renovations for this school and for the Monta Video. I feel like what you can, I make decisions for large groups of people every day that affect large groups of people. And when you're talking about taxpayers' dollars, you can't have those back conversations. And so, we have to be fiscally responsible, yes, but we can't tear families apart. You, when you say, "They just have to be bussed over there for their elementary school," but that's still tearing the family apart.
I understand, Ms., I under-
Mr. Cross, this is your one-minute opportunity for rebuttal.
Yeah, I understand. It's a, it's a hard decision to make as a school board member in redistricting. It's actually the hardest thing that you'll do because there's so much emotions that are tied to that, right? Dad went to this elementary school, or mom went to the elementary school. They want to go to the elementary school, or your kids went to the elementary school, so they want to go to the elementary school. So- So, I, I, I get that, right? I'm, so, when you talk about, I'm, the school board members and my relationships, I'm, I just got a school, I just got a text from Ms. Ashley Burgoyne before tonight's, I had a text message that said, "Good luck on tonight's debate." I got another school board member here sitting tonight, Holly Cave, that supports me to my right. There's one elected school board member that doesn't get along with me and we, I think that up here, we know who that is because she's been, she's been helping your campaign and knocking in my district, going door-to-door. But besides that, I have a good relationship with my board and I have a good relationship with Dr. Shiflett, who I work very closely with. I think it's very important when you tell the public that you're going to do something, that you do it when you run your campaign.
I'm Kieran Shanahan, co-president of the Youth and Government Club. Ms. Mullin, you will be responding first to this question. This is a school safety question. The school board last year approved $4.2 million for installing cameras around the school buildings. How does this help the increasing number of students struggling with mental health issues or students struggling with drug abuse within our schools? Three minutes.
Well, I'm not opposed to having cameras. They're a safety feature. But there are a lot of other tools that you can use to help with school safety. When we talk about safety, we need to talk about the whole person. As a nurse, we talk about holistic care. And in this situation, I want to make a comparison. Holistic student, so we're looking at their physical, mental, emotional well-being. So, to extend beyond that, I'd like to say that there are, there is much more evidence that supports, supporting students' mental health in terms of safety. And there are other measures that you can put in place besides cameras. You know, you can have special doors and locks and things like that. But, those are physical barriers, you know? But the barriers that create school violence are poor mental health support services for students. So we want to focus on early intervention, early identification. And there are some processes that you can put in place for that. One being, you hire more school counselors. You replace the school counselors that were lost when the SROs were hired and doubled within the division, which I don't disagree with, but evidence suggests, and this is research, that SROs don't actually save lives. They make you feel good because they're there, and I've talked to students who say that. But the evidence is clear that they don't contributing to, contribute to saving lives. And so, I think the cameras are great, but if you're a student who is not feeling like their mental well-being is good and they're being tracked through hallways and corridors and things like that, I don't know that, I'd, I'd like to hear more from students about what they think. It's a big expense. It's a huge expense. And, you know, there's, there's nothing wrong with having cameras, but there's other approaches that we can take.
Thank you. Mr. Cross, would you like me to repeat the question?
Uh, no sir. Thank you so much for asking that question. I'm, I'd like to go back real quick to the question that was asked before because I didn't get a chance to finish my statement. But I believe that when you run a campaign, keeping your word is most important. And we had two Board of Supervisor members who ran their campaign. They ran their campaign on two promises. No new rec center and no new building within the county. And what they do the very first, and, and I'm not, I'm not against a rec center. I'm not a Board of Supervisor member. I think the, the rec center's been great for our District 3 members and for our track and for cross-country and all that, so I'm not against it. I get a chance for my family to go over there. And you should have put a elevator in there, but you didn't do a good job in, in building it. But for the handicap and for those who can't walk, can't get to the second floor. But, I believe that when you run your campaign, you should, you should do what you say you were going to do. And you should have done enough research before you, before you said you wasn't going to vote for, for a rec center, before you get on the board. In the very first meeting you go to, you vote for the thing you told the people that you wasn't going to vote. So I think it's very important to keep your word when you're campaigning. I went to a person's house after I was, when I was getting my signatures for this time and I said, "This man in Grotto's, he's a man's man." And I went to him, I said, "If there's anyone that doesn't want me to run, it's going to be him if I didn't keep my word." Because he told me, he said, "Are you going to be like every other politician that when you get elected, you don't do what you say you was going to do?" And I said, "No, I plan on doing what I say I was going to do." And so after my very first meeting as a school board member at Elkton Middle School, when they had hundreds of parents show up, and I, I voted to take the mask off our children, which was very important. Ms. Irons, your position on taking the mask off was? Let's wait for K through 5 and let's wait until we get the vaccine. And then after they get the vaccine, then we can have a conversation. We were a year in COVID at, at that time and you want to sit here and talk about COVID laws? Let's talk about not taking the mask off our children. And we were one of the last divisions within the state of Virginia to finally take the mask off our children after Governor Youngkin put out his executive order to take the mask off. And so, I believe that when you run a campaign, it's important for you to keep your word. I would just say this, we had six, we had hired 60 mental health professionals within the schools. We hired zero SROs over the five years before I got on the board.
Thank you. Ms. Irons, would you like me to repeat the question?
Yes.
This is a school safety question. The school board last year approved $4.2 million for installing cameras around the school buildings. How does this help the increasing number of students struggling with mental health issues or students struggling with drug abuse within our schools?
That is a large sum to have on cameras. And, you know, not knowing the information that was given for making that decision, I would like to gain more about that before I would make a lot of commentary about whether that was the best place to use our money or not. I do think that it's, you know, there's a balance in school safety to, you know, making sure we have a welcoming environment where students feel safe and at home and, and that fosters learning. And so, it's really important to have that. It's also important for students to feel safe and cameras are part of the world that we live in. So, you know, also, cameras can't go everywhere. So, stuff can still happen in the school where, in the places that there are not cameras. I would also agree with Lauren. I'd love to hear more about the student experience around that and what you guys, what makes you actually feel safe? I'm of the mind, as I said earlier, that fostering relationships is the key to student health and mental well-being. I think there's a lot of things we can do to cut back on the stress that you all feel and the anxiety that is rampant through the building. And I'd be happy to talk about that more. I do want to just real quickly respond to Mr. Cross. Keeping your word matters. And I would just like to point out that back in June and then again in August, you told me, you told my husband that you were not quote-unquote "running against me," you were running your own race. And yet, the entire summer, you and your fellow school board member have done nothing but slander me. She's never met me, does not know one single thing about me-
That's false.
-that you may not speak while I am speaking.
I just did.
You may not speak while I am speaking. See, you don't obey the rules and everyone's tired of it. Rules apply to everyone, everyone, including you.
Ladies, ladies and gentlemen, candidates on the stage, Mr. Cross- When people lie on me, I'm not going to sit back and just take it. Mr. Cross, Mr. Cross, Mr. Cross, thank you. The microphone belongs to Ms. Irons, not you. We'd appreciate it if you'd turn your mic off when you're not using it. And please refrain from interrupting the speakers. Ms. Irons, for the purposes of clarification, you're at a minute thirty, you have a minute thirty remaining.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
One thing I have heard a lot about from students and parents, as I've been door-knocking and going about this campaign, is about bullying. I've had several parents complain to me that the, the complaints that they have made to administrators are not being handled very well and their significance concerns for their children's safety. I think we need to draw very strong lines about what appropriate behavior looks like. We have a program in Rockingham County called Character Counts. The pillars are hanging outside. I think we could do more with that. And again, I think we need to have a leadership that models that. Citizenship, trustworthiness, respect for others, taking responsibility, acting fairly, and caring. Those are the, the Character Counts pillars. And I think we could do more with that. That could be something we interestingly do on club days, maybe. We foster some learning there and some engagement between students that helps everyone, again, to feel connected. Because when students feel connected, they feel more likely to speak up, they feel more likely to step in for others. Is that, yep, okay. Oh, 30 seconds, okay. Also, when we talk about school safety, I think it's not just a question. So back to my commentary on critical thinking and questions, it's not just about how do we keep danger out, but also how do we make sure everyone inside feels safe? That's a very complex nuanced matter and I'd be happy to elaborate more, but I'll take, end there.
Thank you. Ms. Mullin, you have one minute for a rebuttal.
I just want to say, Mr. Cross, how do you feel about women in leadership?
I, I think that's-
You don't have to respond. I just wanted to put that out there.
Well, yeah, I can't respond to it, it's my time, but I, at some point, I will.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Cross, one minute for rebuttal.
Was that one minute or three minutes that Ms. Irons got a second ago? Oh, she was at a minute and a half on her second. I believe we've got a small mistake. Mr. Cross, the question to you, Kieran, if you repeat it, you have three minutes to respond. We are-
No sir. It's a one-minute rebuttal. He already had his chance to answer the question.
Okay, thank you very much. We're looking at one minute. Just one, just for clarification, I answered the question and was that Ms. Irons?
Ms. Mullin spoke first, you spoke second. Ms. Mullin, uh, Ms. Irons spoke third.
Okay.
This is now your chance for rebuttal.
Okay, thank you. I'll answer Ms. Mullin's questions later. I think that's a ridiculous question to ask. Number one, you just heard from two people that know zero about school safety. You just heard a statistic proven by Ms. Mullin that saying that data shows that SROs do not prevent school violence or school shooters. The problem is, is that we do not have the data to show that how many demon-possessed people have driven past our schools because they saw a cop car sitting at the entrance of that school. I'll give you an example. The theater massacre killer in Colorado, he drove past the, one theater to drive all the way across town to go shoot up and kill people at the theater across the town. When they interviewed him, they asked him, "Why did you drive past that theater to drive another 15, 20 minutes across town to get to that one to shoot it up?" And he told, he told the, the police that the reason why he didn't go to that theater because he knew that law enforcement was there and they would have a hard time killing a lot of people. So we do not have the data to prove, to show how many massacres that we have prevented by having SROs inside of our school. And that's an old lie of data. The reason why she doesn't know how important the cameras are is because during an active shooter event, we have the capability now to send a link out to first responders and they can see exactly what's happening inside of our schools.
Thank you. Ms. Irons, one minute for rebuttal.
School safety, Rockingham County is working well towards it. Great things have been accomplished. Ashley Burgoyne actually spearheaded the county use of the LifeSpot app. Supervisor Longcore pushed for Narcan in our schools. Jack Dixon advocated for the Stop the Bleed kits. Our behavioral specialists, our counselors, administration work towards our student health every day. Our board voted to hire someone to handle safety management full-time. We have a, someone making $150,000 a year. It's a big monetary item on our budget and he is completely capable of handling school safety. So even if I don't know everything about it, it's time to have someone on the school board that can talk about education because we have hired someone that handles school safety.
Thank you.
Mr. Cross, I have a school budget question for you. Beckham Hash and Diego Marquez would, would like to know, do you believe that it was necessary to spend $4.2 million on cameras and the new director of school safety and security instead of addressing more pressing issues like renovating Spotswood? You have three minutes.
Yes. I'm, here's the deal. I feel their pain with Spotswood. I've been your board member that's been sitting on there over the past four years that's been wanting something to happen here at Spotswood. I can get into that here in a minute, but I've been the one advocating to make sure that Spotswood is renovated and gets updates and things get done here at Spotswood. I had to push the board to get heaters in the boys' bathroom up at the baseball field because they didn't want to put heaters in there. It took me two years to finally get a heater up there. We fixed the roof over at the athletic field, at the football field. We've put in a handicap-accessible ramp for handicap, people to come and watch, the football games. We've resurfaced, resurfaced our tennis court. But if you look at the school when you walked in here, you'll see that the paint is old. The last time that, that the lighting was changed was back in 2012 when I was here as a school resource officer. You'll see that the doors are chipped with the paint. When you go to the other high schools, you'll see the difference in the high schools in the way in which they look. And so, yes, I feel your, I feel your pain in doing, and, and Spotswood not being renovated. But yes, safety is a very important reason and was the, it was the very number-one reason for parents when they asked on the five-year comprehensive plan, "What's the most important thing for you and your, your children's public education?" And they said, "Safety." It wasn't education, it wasn't sports, it wasn't anything else. It was their child's safety because when parents send their kids to school, they want to know that they're safe and they want to know that they're going to come home alive back to them. And so, the qualifications in which I hold in being an expert in school safety holds a lot of weight on this board. And yes, it was my idea to put the Stop the Bleed kits. It was not Mr. Dixon's idea to put in there. We had those conversations when he served for a short term on the board, but it was my idea from the beginning. I got it done. I put the Narcan in there. Yes, I supported Ms. Burgoyne with the, with the stop, with the, with the, with the LifeSpot app. And that has proven that when we have had a false activation, that we had first responders at our school within three minutes. I want you to think about that. Three minutes because of that LifeSpot app, we had law enforcement on scene. We had law enforcement officers that were off-duty who got the alert, who got in their car and rushed to the school. And so, that proved that day that our schools are safer now than what they've ever been. But we still have a long way to go and safety is on the minds of every parent and grandparent that send their kids to school on a daily basis.
Ms. Irons, same question. Would you like me to repeat it?
Yes, please.
All right. Beckham Hash and Diego Marquez would like to know, do you believe that it was necessary to spend $4.2 million on cameras and the new director of school safety and security instead of addressing more pressing issues like renovating Spotswood?
Well, I agree that safety is a very important thing. I share the same sentiment that every single parent shares. Of course, we all are terrorized by, by the idea that something might happen to our children when they leave our home. We want them all to come home safely. But since the question is about budget, I'd like to turn my attention to that. Our budget for the schools is $189 million allocated to us by the Board of Supervisors. I reiterate, it is important to have strong relationships with them. I have those relationships in place. Last week at a Spotswood boosters meeting, we were talking about the softball field being out of compliance with ADA and Title IX. And I, with one phone call, got that handled because I have the relationships in place to deal with that. Matt Cross has no business managing money for our county. He missed the liaison meeting, this goes back to his attendance. He missed the liaison meeting where $1.3 million in state funds was announced for Rockingham County. It's going to be returned by the state. He was absent. Afterwards, he contacted members of the Board of Supervisors to insist Rockingham County did not need the money despite being his one job to advocate for our schools. $1.3 million that could have done lots of things, like fixed some here at Spotswood. I'm here at Spotswood all the time. I'm painting the football field. I've been back in the HVAC room. The HVAC system needs replacing. The roof is leaking. There's mold in the trainer's room. This school has been not taken care of well and it is due. And Matt's been on the board for four years and that's not happened. And I love that right as I was writing the word "baseball," he said "baseball." Advocating for baseball lights and baseball heaters is, for 37 athletes that play baseball, is not good use of our money. That's not fiscal leadership. There's also a pattern of carelessness with his own finances. You may have seen in the news that $9,200 in campaign finance reporting fines have been levied upon him and another $500 last week because he has yet to change his email. His attention to detail- His attention to detail and paperwork is lacking, and we cannot trust someone with a hundred and eighty-nine million dollars if they don't know how to change their email. And guess what? We all file our campaign finance reports online. You log in, you check a box that says "I raised no money," and you hit submit report once a month. It's really not hard. Do you need an email reminder to turn your assignments in? No. No, and no teacher would accept that answer. So we have a huge budget to be used in the county, and, um, we need someone who's responsible to do it, who has relationships in place that can handle that. Meanwhile, our division faces teacher pay gaps, bus driver shortages, rising operation costs, twenty percent increase in our operational funds because of MTC relationship that has been severed by Mr. Cross. We need fiscal discipline, attention to detail, and respect for taxpayer money.
Thank you, Ms. Irons. Ms. Mullen, same question. Would you like me to repeat it?
I think I'm okay. I want to just actually back up to what Mr. Cross said about I'm not being an expert in school safety, and I'm not, but I am an expert in education. So I'm going to say some words, and I want to know how many of them you might know. Lesson plans, outcomes, objectives, constructivism, behaviorism, active learning, formative assessment, summative assessment, passive learning, Bloom's taxonomy, teaching strategies, evaluation methods. These are all words that are innate to education, and there's more. So when you talk about being on the school board, you need to have an understanding of not just one thing. You need to have an understanding of many things. And so, we will all advocate for things that are important to us, but it is not what we think is important. It is what other people, our constituents, our community believes is important. So when you talk about spending that much money as a line item, I manage a huge budget in my, in my role, and we do have to make decisions, but we always reach out to the community that we serve to make those decisions. We don't hard-line it because it's what we think is important. The school board acts as a body. We're not voting as one. We are voting, we are voting as individuals, but we are voting as one, whether it's for or against something. And in terms of just that attention to detail, let's talk about the legal fees that have increased because of Mr. Cross's presence on the board. Those have increased significantly, and I presume that they might increase more because of the latest posting of children on social media. And I told you the other day when we spoke on the phone that I made that statement, a public statement about it, because I disagreed with it. And I own it, and I stand by it. And so, when we talk about going and spending that much money, there are things that need to be done responsibly and in collaboration, and that's all I have to say about that.
Thank you, Ms. Mullen. Mr. Cross, you have a one-minute rebuttal. Would you like to use it?
Yep. Number one, I posted that video, and it's not against the law for me to post that video. Many of you go to your sporting events, you post pictures of your children at sporting events. Ms. Irons has been in the classroom. She's posted videos of other students in there. Your expectation of privacy goes very far down when you enter out to your house. And when you're in the midst of committing a crime, an assault and battery, you have no expectation of privacy, and I will defend kids, whether in the county or the city. Number two, the one point three million dollars, she said was very important to, uh, to be able to sit on the board and to be able to understand and to have a good working, operating with the Board of Supervisors. That's the reason why I did not take the one point three million dollars, because Chairman Ritchie did not want to give the school board the one point three million dollars coming back from the state, uh, in June. We had to set our budget in early, uh, April, and when we set our budget, one point three million dollars came back. Ms. Hurst wanted that money to come back to the schools. She was wanting it to go on my, on my, um, agenda for the night. The school board, the school board chairman sets the agenda. I did not want to have a fight with the Board of Supervisors over the one point three million dollars, and we had enough for our budget.
Ms. Irons, you have a one-minute rebuttal. Would you like to use it?
Yes. It is literally the job of the school board to advocate for the schools. In what world would you not accept one point three million dollars except for your ego because you didn't want anyone to change your agenda? Additionally, posting videos, as Mr. Cross did just a few weeks ago, he seems to be the only one that does not understand that posting minors in conflict in the act of a potential crime is not the same thing as posting students in a joyous learning experience in second grade. You are the only one that seems not to understand that, and when asked to remove it, you didn't just double down or triple down, you quadrupled down. And I have to say, there's a reason why not one single local leader is supporting Mr. Cross this time, and it's because they've asked him several times to stop posting inflammatory things on social media, and every time he says no, and he does it again and again and again. And if you saw on the news just last week, Merck is bringing the three billion dollars of investment to our local Elkton plant. That was almost not completed and deal because of the school board. They did not want to come here because of the chaos in our school board.
Ms. Mullen, you have a one-minute rebuttal. Would you like to use it?
Sure. I actually did hear about that as well, the money coming in from Merck, but I did not know that it was at risk because of Mr. Cross. So thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you.
Ms. Irons, this question will be going to you first. This is a curriculum framework question. Students have expressed concerns for increased course load during their junior and senior year. How will the proposed four-by-four scheduling process address this issue? Three minutes to respond.
I think there are lots, I can talk to, about curriculum framework all, all day long as a teacher. As a former music teacher, I can tell you the four-by-four is not something that I would advocate for. And so, to those of you who don't know, we currently at Spotswood are on an even odd schedule, odd-even schedule, where students have eight classes all year long, alternating every other day. Uh, four-by-four means they would do four, uh, classes first semester and four classes second semester. This basically destroys programs like music, band, language arts, and things, and, um, and also doesn't really support mathematics and things that we, core subject areas, because, for example, uh, well, A, for the, for the elective programs, uh, it's a lack of continuity, and when you lose students in engagement from one year to the next, they, they are less likely to register for your class. As well as, think about this, if you are a freshman in semester one and you have Algebra I, and then you don't have Algebra II until second semester sophomore year, there's a huge gap in learning that takes, uh, that loss that occurs, so. And then, uh, meanwhile, I, I'm not a big fan of it, and, uh, course load, to speak to your question about course load, I think there's other options that we can pursue. There's lots of creative options out there, and this is an area where I could serve very well. I love puzzles. I love figuring things like this out, and I would be more likely to advocate for a hybrid program where we have classes, some of them are longer than others. It's a little more complicated to schedule, but, um, and so, as a result of that, I would like to talk with the guidance counselors, but I would, I would not want to advocate for the, the, um, four-by-four scheduling. Um, as a matter of, uh, the course load and the stress you all feel, I know when I was teaching here, we only had seven classes every day. Uh, the first block was the same, and then you had periods two, three, four, or, or sorry, three, five, seven, and then two, four, six, in alternating days. I preferred that. I would also add that I think we, and this comes from the state, unfortunately, it's not a, a school board thing, but I would like to advocate for it, and again, this where relationships come into play. I think we need to consider how much you all need to learn as far as a depth. I think we can streamline learning by having you focus on, um, getting more quality and not quantity. So, um, it was, how much time do I have left? Thirty seconds. For example, having release time, I'm going to speak to my son this year. He has release time first block, and he only has six classes this year, and boy, are we all happier. He is, his grades are better, and we're, there's less homework at night, there's less stress, and so we're all getting along better, and, um, he's, he's, it's just, it's a better fit for our family. And so, um, I think there's something to be said for reducing course load and doing, improving your performance. I'll elaborate that one in my next minute.
Thank you. Ms. Mullen, you have three minutes to respond to the question. Would you like me to repeat it?
Uh, no, I'm okay, thank you. Being an educator for so long, um, one of the things we always worry about are learning styles and learning abilities and the pace of how we teach, what we teach, the content that, that all factors in. So I actually agree with Ms. Irons about the hybrid models, because those make it a little bit more individualized for the student who can learn really quickly, or a student who needs a little more time and thoughtful, um, uh, learning process. Also, for the students who are engaged in those, in those, um, music and theater and educate, and, um, those very special arts and humanities. So I, I think that hybrid, though, does, and, um, going, switching it up for different students and different learning styles, it takes a lot of work. There's a lot of work for guidance counselors, but it can be done, and I think that we can be very creative. I also am very much involved with lots of methods and developing different types of schedules, different types of implementation models. Probably not things that haven't already been thought of, but there's always a creative way to solve those problems, to make it a more individualized learning environment for the kids. My background in simulation also is a sort of an extension of what Ms. Irons said as far as the depth of learning. We can use certain scenario-based type learning experiences to enhance the way people learn. And actually, I am in communication right now with the Lab School at JMU to start working with them to help develop scenario-based projects that will enhance the type of learning experiences that these kids who are involved in the Lab School are engaged in. And so, I really look forward to helping teachers develop those types of experiences.
Thank you. Mr. Cross, you have three minutes to respond to the question. Would you like me to repeat it?
Yes, can you repeat it?
This is a curriculum framework question. Students have expressed concerns for increased course load during their junior and senior year. How will the proposed four-by-four scheduling process address this issue?
Yeah, we, let me, let me address something real quick, and I'll get to that. I, I'd like to, everyone, there's been a lot of lies spoken throughout this whole campaign. Ms. Irons wants to, to say tonight that I was the one who said that I wouldn't bring up her and only my records throughout this, but it's been Ms. Irons going out throughout the community telling people that I cussed at a child playing baseball at a baseball game, which is not true. It's been her giving out false, uh, information on my school board attendance record, which is not true. And so, you can go to the, uh, the actual truth at mattcross.com and see what the actual truth is on that. When we look at the four-by-four schedule at East Rock, we're seeing that it's actually doing a good job down at East Rock right now. I think they, uh, the administrators down there saw that, uh, there were some other schools that were doing that, and they wanted to bring it back. We're seeing the data showed that it's actually helping the kids, uh, who are, are doing the four-by-four schedule. So I think that if, when that is implemented here at Spotswood, that it's going to be something that will benefit students and will benefit the learning of, of all the students here.
Thank you. Ms. Irons, you have one minute for a rebuttal.
Absolutely. Let's go back to the questions I posed at the beginning, critically thinking, is this true? What evidence supports this? I make zero claims that are not based in fact. I do my homework and every single attendance record, it comes from Rockingham County Public Schools. So students, when you are faced with evidence from official records, you must change your mind, even if it's inconvenient. You cannot argue with the official attendance records of Rockingham County. They are verified data. Additionally, thank you for bringing up the baseball incident, because literally the straw that broke the camel's back and what made me decide to run for school board again. I never said you cursed at a student, because the student was on the baseball field. I've, I said I saw the video. I saw the whole video where, that clearly disproves what Mr. Cross posted on his social media as the account of what occurred. He was in a disagreement with a parent in Rockingham County and made himself the victim, as he always does. We need better leadership. And first of all, what business does any school board member have being in an altercation with a parent at all?
Thank you, Ms. Irons. Ms. Mullen, you have one minute for rebuttal.
As elected officials, we are held to a higher standard. And when you talk about posting the video, I'm going back to the video. You said that it wasn't illegal, but it was highly unethical and highly unprofessional. And you, you inserted yourself into a conversation that had nothing to do with you. And so, when you talk about this baseball game thing, I don't, I mean, I saw clips or whatever. I'm not going to say that it's validated, because I don't know, but, you know, you read things. And so, I just think that as an elected official, you have to have integrity, and you have to have ethics, and you have to be professional at all times.
Thank you, Ms. Mullen. Mr. Cross, you have one minute for rebuttal.
Yeah, I, I think it's funny that the law enforcement officer and the pastor that's up here tonight is being questioned on my character and my ethics. The, the thing that I find is funny is that students, yes, you must challenge everything that you see and everything that you, you are taught, because when you go back to those official records, those Rockingham County records that you're talking about tonight, you're going to find March eighteenth of 2024 of me not chairing that meeting. I was there. I chaired the meeting. It was my twenty-fourth wedding anniversary that I went to. I chaired the meeting, and I left there. I watched my son play the rest of his ballgame. We went, me and my wife went out to eat at the steakhouse afterwards, and that's what the records show. There are other records that are on there that don't show all the interviews that I went to for the new superintendent. It doesn't include all the community meetings here at Spotswood and Turner Ashby High School. So the records are incomplete, and my, my school board ratio, uh, attendance record is more like eighty-two percent and not sixty-seven percent, because yes, I have missed school board meetings. I travel down to, uh, Central America to do mini-mission trips, and I go two to three times a year, and so I've missed that, and I've went on one vacation.
Thank you, Mr. Cross.
I'd like to say thank you to the, um, members of the Youth and Government Club for those questions from the student body at Spotswood High School for producing them. It's time in the debate. We're going to move on to closing remarks. Again, the candidate order drawn by lot. Ms. Irons, the closing remarks, first three minutes go to you.
Thank you again for having us all. There is a saying, "Where your treasure is, there your heart will be also." This means that the way we spend our time and our energy and our resources reveals what we really truly care about. So Matt just spoke to, he is at his anniversary, he's at the church mission. That's great. Those are wonderful things, and reasonable absences are, are completely fine. Not all the time, and it sounds like your heart is with your church. My heart is with our schools. If you followed me, you've seen our, my campaign, you've seen me in our schools, because I'm here all the time, you already know where my heart is. It is with my children, it is with the children in this school, and it is with my lifelong passion for education. Over the years, I've spent countless hours volunteering in classrooms, teaching, organizing events, making meals for teachers, selling concessions, painting the football field, because I love this community, and when you love your community, you show up for it. And that was my answer when a Spotswood student recently asked me, "If elected, how will you be different?" My answer was simple. I will show up. Again, official records show that Mr. Cross is not here. He has never achieved an attendance rate better than seventy-one percent. In Rockingham County, students are required to attend ninety percent of the time. Attendance is one of the most basic responsibilities of any role, whether you're a student, a teacher, or a school board member. Furthermore, when he does show up, he brings division instead of collaboration. Again, he's been asked repeatedly to stop posting inflammatory things on social media, but refuses. Life is about relationships. Leadership is about relationships. It's about earning trust in your community and making connections with others. Our students, our staff, and our families deserve a board that models respect teamwork and integrity. Additionally, the- Additionally, the people on our school board have access to information that the public does not and should not have. And that means that the community must be able to trust their representatives. We trust that our representatives will get, that have the information, will be making decisions that are in everyone's best interest, that they will handle that information responsibly without breaking confidences or weaponizing it for political gain or for social media clicks. Rockingham County deserves better. And I have to say, I'm really excited to do this job. I cannot wait to talk about how to improve the grading policy or to lighten the course load for students and how to help you excel and how to make summer school more effective, how to put technology in its proper place, how to support students. I really cannot wait to get past this part so I can do this job and do it well. Everything I do, I do with excellence because my name is on it, and my name means something to me. And I will close by saying this. Every student in Rockingham County is someone's child. As a mother, as an educator, and a community member, I will care for every child because I believe that every single one of you is a God-given treasure, not just to your parents, but to all of us. So I want for every student what I want for my own students. Safe, stable schools with the strongest teachers, the most supportive leadership, and a focus on effective learning for the benefit of your future. Thank you.
Candidate Mullen, you have three minutes for your closing remarks.
So you're here tonight because you care, and I care. That's why I entered this race way back in March. I was the first one to put my hand up in the air, to go and put myself out there to try to stop the politicization of the school board. It wasn't an easy decision, but I went at it full force. So let me tell you what I care about. I want kids to feel safe. I want to feel like they belong. I want them to feel like they belong, that they're safe to learn and aren't singled out by school policies that are passed by school board members who feel that their vision and ideology is what should be put on all the children. I believe in teachers and valued employees who can feel they trust the school board for fear of retaliation, that they can teach, and students can learn and not feel as though they're going to be called into the office or have some member of the school board come after them. I want to support parent choice and parent voice because our parents are stakeholders in the learning process. I believe in filling bookshelves, not tearing them down. I believe in a community that feels their taxpayer dollars are being managed responsibly and not behind closed doors in sidebar conversations and with transparency. I believe in a division that is united in the pursuit of excellence and making RCPS the destination division. So as you know, I've run on unity, which stands for undivided, not separate, in this together. Teamwork, you, me, we. I yield my time.
Mr. Cross, you have three minutes for your closing remarks.
Yes, I want to say thank you to Ms. Irons and thank you to Ms. Mullen for stepping into the arena and running for school board. Takes a lot of courage to do that. As you've heard tonight, a lot of half-truths spoken in this meeting. I just want to say the plea to my community because here tonight, Ms. Irons has a lot of supporters, but there are a lot of people that are watching online. I see many of you here that I went to high school with or my brothers went to high school with. The first time I stepped into Spotswood High School was in October of 1990. I've grown up around you. I've worked around you. You've known me. You've seen my character. You've seen how I've lived my life. You've seen how I've raised my children. And now that I got into politics, my opponents want to paint me as some monstrous person. I was never called a racist or a bigot before I ran for school board. It took, it hurt for a while because when I, this past week, I heard that Matt Cross isn't also for Asians, that he doesn't like Asians. And I'm sorry that this generation of kids have been indoctrinated to the point where it's hard for them to see the truth about someone and see how they live their life because you hear rumor after rumor after rumor and after rumor. And so, I want to make the plea tonight. If you want to go back to where we was four years ago and having a school board that wasn't transparent, then vote for someone else. If you want to go back like we were four years ago and have someone that's going to advocate for you strong as parents on the board and make sure that you come first and your child come first, then vote for someone else on the board. If you're an employee and you want someone to have your back when you're doing your job, you want Matt Cross sitting on your school board. If you don't want your children to be indoctrinated by the gender ideologies, then you want Matt Cross sitting on your school board. Just right across the hallway, when I first came on the board, there was the American flag that was taken down with the pride flag that was put up with 20 other gender ideologies in there. We said enough's enough. We didn't want it down. And so we came up with a flag policy. Not only did we come up with a flag policy, but to get the LGBTQ flags out of all of our schools. We came up with a policy, the flag policy, to say we're going to begin to promote patriotism inside of our schools because we are losing a generation to this Marxist idea that America is evil. And if we don't have a school board that supports patriotism, we've lost our nation. You send your kids to school more in a day than what you get a chance to spend with them. I am keeping teachers accountable to what they teach. I am keeping administrators accountable to what they do, and I am making it fair across the board. And so, I have stood up for you when it came to the mask or whether it's come to anything that you've called me and asked me to look into. I have been the one to stand up for me, to stand up for you. I apologize. And you know that you can trust me. And so, if you have any concerns, especially those who are listening online tonight, you've heard something, please reach out to me. You know who I am. I grew up here. I've lived here longer than both of these two put together that's lived here in Rockingham County, and that just really means I'm getting old. And so, I know who you are. You know who I am. And I'm asking you tonight to give me another chance to sit on the Rockingham County School Board. So thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. This concludes our debate between candidates Matthew Cross, Hillary Irons, and Lauren Mullen. Thank you for coming out this evening, and remember to vote on November 4th for the District III Board Member of your choice. Have a good night.